As a preliminary matter, just to make sure that our folks online can, we can hear them and they can be heard. Mr. Berger?
I can hear you.
Alex?
Can you hear me okay?
Perfect.
Awesome.
Thank you. So, good evening. It is 7:04 PM. This open meeting of the Grafton Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted both remotely and in person, consistent with Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, extending remote meeting protocols through March 31, 2025. This meeting is convening via Zoom video conference and in person, as posted on the meeting agenda, which can be found on the Town of Grafton website. Please see the meeting agenda for how to, for details on how to participate remotely. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. All participation in this meeting will be visible to others. Please be aware that others may be able to see you and that you should take care enough to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording of this meeting and the recording may be published or rebroadcast at a later date. This meeting may feature public comment. For anyone attending virtually, would like to request acknowledgement to speak, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. The meeting administrator will enable you to speak when it's your turn. If we have anyone on the phone exclusively, the AV staff will coordinate with the meeting administrator to allow you to speak. For those in person, we will ask you to step up to the podium to speak and for all speakers, please state your name and address prior to your comments or questions. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be done by a roll call vote. So, we have four members this evening present in person and we have Alex online remotely. So, we'll, Alex is an alternate. We'll appoint him as a voting member this evening. And with that, we will start with the first case on the agenda, which is 29 North Street.
Just come up and have a seat here, Mr. Smythe.
So, the way we'll proceed this evening is that the clerk will read the petition and then the petitioner will have the opportunity to present their case. The petitioner will have 15 minutes to present. The petitioner shall present the required information and all comments should be specific. Any opposition will also have 15 minutes to speak. These time limits will be extended only with the consent of the board. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or in opposition to the petition will have an opportunity to do so. Any letters received in favor of or in opposition to a petition will be read into the meeting or will be available on the ZBA website for the particular case. The board may ask questions from time to time. However, all conversations should be directed through the chair. After all evidence is presented, the board will enter into discussion and render a decision. At any time during the hearing and prior to a decision being made by this board, the petitioner has the option to request the petition be withdrawn without prejudice or continue to a later date, at which time the petitioner could provide additional information favorable to the petitioner. So, with that said, I will turn things over to our petitioner.
Let me read the legal notice first.
Oh, I apologize. Jump the gun.
That's okay. The Grafton Board of Appeals has received a petition from Dan Smythe for 29 North Street requesting that the zoning board of appeals grant a special permit to allow deck to be constructed over an existing garage on a pre-existing non-conforming structure. The garage deck is currently 7.4 feet off the front line where 30 feet is required. The board will conduct a public hearing on April 24, 2024 at 7:00 PM in Conference Room A at the Municipal Center in Grafton. Any person wishing to be heard in conjunction with this request should appear at the time and place designated or by letter to this board in time to be read at the hearing. The April 24 meeting may be accessed via either the following means: Zoom conferencing or by telephone. Zoning Board of Appeals: Brian Waller, William McCusker, Kay Reed, William Yeomans, Peter Adams, Jiffy Thomas, and Alex Mahia.
So, at this time, turn it over to the petitioner.
Yeah. So, basically, I'd like to, my wife and I'd like to put a deck on top of an existing garage and we're, for the reason, we have a gorgeous view of the Worcester Hills that we'd love, love to, you know, be able to use. So, yeah, I'm not sure if there's any more, anything more than that than, I just, it's a, it'll enhance the house and its value dramatically. So, I think we'll get what, anything we put in, if not more, back if we decide to sell.
Does, or will the footprint of the deck exceed the current footprint of the existing garage?
No.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Yeomans?
I drove by the garage this afternoon. I'm familiar a little bit with that Warren Street in that I wish I had bought a house down there and then I passed on, as many of us have. But the, I, I think that, my opinion is that a deck over that garage will add a lot to the character of the back of that house. And it's, it's not going to be offensive in any way. It's, as you can see here in the image, it's, it seems to be a very natural flow to the, to the porch. So...
And luckily, my, one of my neighbors down Warren Street further removed a huge tree, which opened up, you know, doubled the, the view. So, yeah, so it's, it's a perfect location for a deck.
You'll be able to have a drink with them up on your deck if you get the approval, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McCusker?
Just for the purposes of findings that we need to capture, it's currently a single family residence?
Yes.
And it'll still be a single family residence after you put the deck on?
Yes.
How many bedrooms and bathrooms?
Three bedrooms and two and a half baths.
And that will not change either?
Right.
All right. I think it's all out. Well, I guess one other, this is not in the water, water supply protection overlay district, right? I don't see any indication of that.
Nope, it's not.
How old is the house?
1830.
1830. Wow. You've kept it well.
We've, we've put quite a bit into it.
Mr. Berger, any, and I know we received your zoning determination today, any, any comments or anything you want to point out?
No. No, I, everything's in my zoning determination and this is a perfect example of, this is a special permit.
Nope. We only got two comments, one from the Board of Health and one from the Treasure Collector. They were basically no comment. Everything was fine.
All right. Is there any further discussion from the board?
Seems like an easy decision. It looks like it'd be a great addition to the house.
Yeah. There's nobody online?
Nope. There's nobody.
All right. So, at this time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing for case number 901.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Take a roll call vote on that motion. Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Mr. Mahia?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. The public hearing is closed and we already, I believe, confirmed that there's no further discussion from the board.
At some point, you need to probably appoint Alex.
He did.
I did at the beginning for both cases.
Okay. I missed something. I'm sorry. Just a quick review of the findings. Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Finding F1, the structure is built in 1830. F2, parcel is located in R40 zoning district. F3, R40 zone requires 40,000 square foot lot. Finding F4, the structure is located in a 16,600 square foot lot. Finding F5, the R40 requires a 30-foot front yard setback and the structure is 7.4 feet off the front yard setback on the Warren Street frontage. Based on findings F1 through F5, the current structures are pre-existing non-conforming structure. Finding F6, the current use, single family residence. Finding F7, the current home is a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath home, the proposed home is a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath home. Finding F8, the neighborhood consists of primarily single family residences. Finding F9, the deck will not increase the existing footprint. Based on findings F6 through F9, is that right? Six, yeah. F6 through F9, the proposed addition is not more detrimental to the neighborhood and it is not in WSPOD, so none of that matters. So, those are our findings.
All right.
I need your plot and bills.
Yeah.
Oh, you want, yeah.
Give me a minute.
Okay. Yep.
I move that the Grafton Board of Appeals grant to Dan Smythe, 29 North Street, a special permit to allow a deck to be constructed over an existing garage on a pre-existing non-conforming structure.
So moved.
As depicted in Exhibit A.
Second.
With Exhibit A being the plot plan? Motion made and seconded. We'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Mr. Mahia?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. The special permit is granted.
So, hold on. I'm just writing as I'm talking. I have 14 days to get the decision written and signed by the board members, then file it with the town clerk. Then there's a 21-day appeal period. After that, you can get your permit. I know you've got everything submitted into Bob, so I think just make sure you have everything there. So, as soon as we get the certificate of appeal, we can, you give it to me and push the button and issue the, the building permit. Unfortunately, I'm leaving tomorrow out of town for a week, so I will get this typed up as soon as I come back. I just leave your signature on both of these. Just sign right there. And just sign right there. And you're all set?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So, it was two weeks for?
So, I have 14 days from today to get it signed and filed with the town clerk. And then after, once I file it, there's a 21-day appeal period. But I'll send all that in a letter to you.
Okay.
Once I get it all signed.
Okay.
Okay?
Great. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
All right. So, the next item on the agenda is case number 902, 55 and 59 North Main Street. We invite the applicant to step forward and take a seat. Ms. Reed, I'd like to read that into the record.
The Grafton Board of Appeals has received a petition from Julie Bonvenzy, did I say that right? Bonvenzy, 55 North Main Street, requesting that the zoning board of appeals grant a special permit to extend a pre-existing non-conforming structure for an addition on the rear of the building and to extend the time to rebuild a pre-existing, pre-existing non-conforming structure from two years to three years. Also a variance from Section 4.2.3.2 for parking to be allowed in the front yard of NB Zone. The board will conduct a public hearing on April 24, 2024 at 7:00 PM in Conference Room A at the Municipal Center in Grafton, Massachusetts. Any person wishing to be heard in conjunction with this request should appear at the time and place designated or by letter to this board in time to be read at the hearing. Zoning Board of Appeals: Brian Waller, William McCusker, Kay Reed, William Yeomans, Peter Adams, Jiffy Thomas, and Alex Mahia.
All right. So, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Great. Thank you very much for having us tonight. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Matt Ekel with Fletcher Tilton on behalf of the applicant, Bellevense LLC. With me tonight, to my right, I have Julie Bonvenzy, the owner and operator of the property, as well as Rob Lucier from CMG Environmental. As read into the record, we're here this evening seeking relief relating to the proposed reconstruction of the existing building at 55 North Main Street. The structure was damaged in a fire in November of '22. You may be able to see in the existing conditions picture if it's recent enough, some of the damage that was, that basically made the building uninhabitable. For the time being, the operation is operating down the street. However, Ms. Bonvenzy wishes to rebuild what's there as well as erect a side and rear addition, as well as kind of formalize the parking that currently exists. Just by way of background, if potentially we could shift the screen to the right, you'll see the existing parking area as well as the slope of the, the property. So, this property fronts on North Main Street and then backs up to High Street in the rear. You can see there on the far right, the slope, it's about 24, 25 feet from grade up into High Street, which provides some of, some of the hardship that I'll get into in more detail. Just, there's a little bit more background. The lot itself is just under 48,000 square feet, at 47,899 square feet. It's a neighborhood business district for zoning. As mentioned, we front on North Main Street and back up to High Street, so it's a through lot of nature. This, as you can see in the, the image there on the screen, the structure itself exists on the far left side of the property with a large open curb cut there. It's kind of in the middle of the property and then some additional parking to the right side, which goes right up to the property line in the front. Overall, the structure, if approved, would contain 8,766 square feet. The applicant is providing 39 parking spaces and was approved by the planning board for eight additional spaces to be held in reserve. On that note, we did go before the planning board and receive site plan approval as well as a special permit for the use because we're proposing a professional services over 5,000 square feet as well as for that reserved parking. The project itself will allow Ms. Bonvenzy to not only rebuild and, and add on to the existing building and return to her past home there for her business, it'll also allow some increased accessibility. Right now, there is a ramp in the rear. However, it's based at the rear of the property and it's quite a windy ramp. We're proposing a direct entry at grade, which will then have a lift to go up and down and provide full accessibility. It's also going to allow for increased rooms for the yoga and other activities, as well as better restroom accommodations, a, a better lounge and entryway and things of that nature. In terms of the hours of operation, we're, we're proposed anywhere between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM. Currently, we do have a class schedule that varies throughout the week, but we do have some flexibility through the planning board for that. In terms of the floor plans themselves, we're proposing utility rooms, restrooms, locker rooms, offices, and a yoga room at the lower level. And then the main lobby will be on the first floor, as well as massage rooms, a sauna, specialty rooms, quiet rooms, additional restrooms. As mentioned, we are seeking both a variance and a special permit. The variance relates to front yard parking. As mentioned, the planning board did approve our parking configuration, but we are about 10 feet off the property line in the front, so it would count as front yard parking. I do think we have a legitimate hardship here, again, with the slope of the property, to push the parking back. One, we'd start to encroach on High Street in the rear, where we're also abutting a, a street in a public way. And we also would have to do significant, either site work or excavation, take down a lot of the existing vegetation, install retaining walls, things of that nature, all to pull the parking further away from the street, which is, is infeasible and impractical and potentially even impossible, depending on how you look at it. I would also point to the fact that we would be improving the parking as it's currently constituted. Right now, as, as you could see in that picture, it's right up on the property line. It's, it's dusty. It's, you know, not paved or striped or anything of the nature. So, this would close the curb cut, provide some signalization to come in and out of the, the property, have striped parking, as, as you can see, a clearly defined parking lot. And pulling it back 10 feet from what's existing would also allow us to do some, some landscaping and have some additional buffer from what's there right now. So, we do believe there's a hardship. This condition is, is truly incidental to this property, although a few of the other properties adjacent have a similar slope. We're kind of at the crest in the rear of High Street, so we have kind of the biggest slope going from North Main Street up to High Street. We also have the pre-existing building in its condition and, and the parking is, is truly unique currently to the property as well. We don't believe there'd be any detriment to the public good by doing this. Again, I think it's a, it's an improvement to what's there now for parking. It should make the, the site safer to, to ingress and egress, as well as to maneuver once you're within the lot itself. And we don't see any detriment to the public by providing this organized parking, so to speak. And finally, we don't believe it will derogate from the intent in the bylaw, the intent and purpose, excuse me, of the bylaw. You know, it should allow Ms. Bonvenzy to continue to use her property and provide a safer parking situation. So, that's, that's kind of our argument for the, the variance in the front yard parking in terms of the special permit. It would be a special permit because it is a pre-existing non-conforming structure. We have about a 21-foot and a half front yard setback to the existing front of the building. We are proposing an addition, as you can see, kind of outlined in the, I can't tell what shade it is, but darker gray, so to speak, which is along the right side of the property as existing, in the right side of the building, I should say, and then into the rear of the property. I will note that nothing that we're proposing on the addition is causing any new setback issues. This is only triggering because the existing front yard is, is, does not meet code, but we're not increasing that or exacerbating that existing non-conformity at the site. I'm happy to walk through the, the floor plans. Rob can certainly walk through the site plan in greater detail if the board would like, but I'll pause at this point and take any questions the board may have.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Please.
So, can you show us on the, on the, you know, there, your diagram there, like what's existing? So, where the back of the building is now?
Sure.
So, that's, I assume that's not going any farther back into the hill, correct?
So, the yellow shade here is the existing building.
Oh, okay.
That's damaged. And this green, whoop, sorry, don't want this to fall. The green shade here is the proposed addition. So...
So, that green section is, are you having to move into the hill at all? Or you're not moving any of that? Okay.
Yeah. I can leave here. I'll show you the grading plan.
It's where the ramp was, so it's all flat.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. It's pretty level in the rear portion here, because as Julie just mentioned, there's a very large, it was an ADA accessible ramp.
Yeah. Okay.
So, that's where this kind of encompasses. The only place that we're kind of encroaching into the hill a bit is where there's a dumpster enclosure that's proposed, but pretty much the limit of pavement is staying at the bottom of that slope.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. I spent a little time there, there today, looking at it from the parking lot view. I have two questions. The, the existing handicap ramp, which is rather extensive, I mean, that's going to give you almost the space you need for that addition. So, you're going to have a ramp inside or a lift of some sort inside? Okay. So, it'll be an inside lift that will be used as needed for people that are, are coming. Have you, have you in the past had a lot of handicapped clients?
No.
Julie, just get closer to the mic so they can hear you.
No.
Thank you.
Okay. So, it's, okay. And the other question I have is looking at the request for parking out front. I envision, based on the space that's there, that you're asking for parking spaces that allow you to back out onto 140? Is that, or you will have a curb cut there?
Yes. Not, not back out. The, the majority of the parking would be on the, kind of the right side of that plan.
Right.
And there'll be maneuverability within the lot. And then there's a few other accessible parking spaces, but they would all be backing out within the lot and then pulling forward onto...
Okay. So, there's, you're not creating spaces in the front that are going to be perpendicular to the building and with the potential for backing out onto the street?
No. There would be, there would be a 10-foot setback. So, you can, Rob, maybe to the, on the right side, on the orange, there's, there's going to be about a 10-foot buffer zone with plantings and, and the like. So, you would have to leave through the parking lot and then come out the one curb cut. So, we'd be closing a lot of that curb cut, as you can see today. That is somewhat of an existing condition that we'd be eliminating because it's kind of the Wild West over there right now with, with the large curb cut and, and undefined parking spaces.
Yeah. So, there's a 24-foot wide, basically, reduction to the, a 24-foot wide curb cut. So, basically, instead of having pavement, which this is about a little over 50 feet going straight down to 140, that's going to be reduced to 24 feet for a more controlled enter and exit.
Well, you've clarified that because I had looked at the potential parking spaces to be that area to the right and left of the entrance that you, so you're not affecting that, your parking, that you're adding, is not adding to those spaces directly in the front. Okay.
We, we anticipate it to be much more channelized in and out and safer.
No, I think that's, you know, that's, that's a very busy road and I think that that will help those passing by and those going in and out of your facility. I, I, I don't see no, no problem with it.
So, how many spaces are required?
I think we're...
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, required is 47 and proposed is 47. Through the planning board, we requested a reserved parking area because we didn't want to affect too much of the vegetated buffer and we feel that the business operation that's proposed doesn't need the additional parking. So, these were, it's basically bank spaces for if there's a need for them in the future, we, they can be built. But really, to keep that vegetative buffer that's existing to this residential parcel, we're pulling that away. So, with that, there's eight spaces that are in that future parking requirement.
Eight of the 47.
Yes, correct. Yep.
And how many, can I, I'm, I know it's probably guessing because it is the Wild West, but how many would you say there are today?
Um, that's a good question.
Is the footprint of what's there?
There was 26 when I, before I bought the other parcel. There's 26 in that first one.
And then the other parcel contains?
20.
Oh, yeah. Probably additional 20 or so. So, it might be about the same. So, we're pulling, Rob, I don't know how much further, if at all, we're going back with the parking plan, but we're pulling it 10 feet away. So, we'd be losing a little bit of square footage on the front that's currently used for parking. I don't know. Is that expanding further in the rear, Rob, or is that staying about the same?
This area, it's expanding just slightly to basically where the bottom of that slope is. So, there's additional parking spaces here. That's, because the existing pavement ends about here where the corner of the building is. So, there's just some additional spaces. There's two employee tandem spaces that are proposed. So...
You're just going to ask where employees park in on that same parking lot? Or they have another?
Down the end.
Okay.
Let the clients park in the front.
Have you had capacity issues with parking?
Not really. Not that I, no.
Do you?
No, I've been there on their busy times and there's a lot, there's enough parking, even in the new spot when the small parking lot.
And do you expect a, a higher volume at the same time than you had before with the expansion?
I think we're only adding like one or two more rooms as far as, like treatment rooms. I don't, I don't expect, I think this lot, the second lot will be enough.
Enough even without the, those?
So, how many, how many employees would you have on at any given time doing services?
Eight.
So, and each one can have one client?
Mm-hmm.
So, that's 16 and your receptionist is 17, plus you is 18. And then if you have classes, maybe add 10 to that?
Yeah. Five to 10.
So, you'd probably max out at maybe 30 at the utmost if you have a full class, plus every, every person has someone in their first service, which doesn't always happen.
No.
Okay. Well, that's what I'm trying to get to. Like, if the max, it could be 30.
Right.
Just because I know the way your place is set up.
And just by the nature of it, it's very much scheduled and limited as opposed to like a gym where you might have 100 people show up in the morning and not expect them. You kind of know what's going to be planned and who's coming.
Maybe your business will increase with the new building.
That's hope.
Yeah. That'd be great.
I think Julie would certainly take it if she has to build out those eight extra spaces. That'd be a good sign, but...
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the board?
I'm gonna want to get into very specific for the variance and then the special permits. I just would, if there's any public input or, I think it'll be general sense for our, for our start.
I, I definitely have concerns around the variance.
Okay.
Please go.
Yeah, so, Councilor, as you know, right, there's three things that are required for, for variance, right? Unique, something unique, solitary shaped topography. And then there's gotta be hardship, right? It's, the hardship isn't necessarily that it would cost a lot of money to, to strip down the back of the lot. The hardship is the literal enforcement of the, of the bylaw would create a hardship. Okay, so the, it kind of gets to the parking, right? And, and what I've heard is that 47 are required. That's from the planning board. And I imagine that's straight out of our bylaw and I'm pretty sure the planning board can waive that or maybe they can only put some in reserve, but I thought they can adjust that. And it's a little unfortunate that they've already done their site plan approval before we've done this process. It's really backwards. They should not have done that. But regardless, I'm hearing 47 is, is the number that they're, so the literal enforcement of the bylaw would mean you can have how many spaces? And this is something Mr. Waller was asking about. And I guess the answer is you don't know.
As far as what, so you're.
How many, how many spaces can you fit in the envelope, in the buildable envelope?
Um, so you're, basically you're asking, just so I understand, how many we can fit in between the front yard setbacks?
Yeah, yeah. If, if, if you don't get a variance, how many, how many spots can you put in?
I, I don't really know the number off the top of my head, but I would say it's gonna be less.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure of that. And I, I think that, that, that's, that's the hardship, right? Is, is if I don't get this variance, I can only have this many parking spots. And, and, you know, that's your hardship right there.
Sure. Yeah, I would put the number at about, at about half.
Okay, so then, then, as I said, it's really kind of different though to Mr. Berger. If they hadn't bought this second lot, they had 21 spots. We, we, we wouldn't even be talking about a variance, right? I mean, those, those, those spots were already there, they're pre-existing, they're, they don't need anything as far as a variance for the parking spots that they had, right?
If they're, if they're increasing their square footage, then they need to conform to the today's standards for parking. This is just, this is just like we talked about with the outdoor parking for the, for the restaurants.
Okay. Yep, all right, so they've increased the size of the building, therefore they need more parking. All right. All right, so I, I just want to try to document what the, the hardship is, required 47 spaces. I guess even the 21 existing, a couple of those were, are within the setbacks. So I, all right, required, required 47 spaces, proposed 47 spaces. Approximately 20 or so. You said half, so I'm gonna say 24. Spaces without the variance. All right. You know, and I think that is the hardship. In my opinion. So then the last one is, is is, you know, is the public good, right? The detriment to the public good, that sort of thing. And I think that's fairly straightforward. Just like Cassie, if you're increasing the space, why, why wouldn't you be increasing the need for parking? Did I hear that said?
We're increasing the space, but the parking that, the land that I purchased a few years back will cover it. Because.
Okay, all right, all right.
Well, no, but, but I think, but I think where you were going with that question was if you're increasing the space of the building, how does that not translate into a greater need for parking? And I think what I heard was that essentially you're kind of spreading out within that additional space. There's not a big increase in the number of employees or clients that will be in and out on, at any given time.
Well, let, let me twist that question a bit, right? If you only had 24 spaces, you said you had about 21. If you had, if, if you only had 24 spaces, would that be enough for the business you hope to run out of this new building?
If I only had, no, I would need more because we are increasing the square footage.
Okay. Okay.
I might, did I, did I say that right?
But we're, to bring it down, we're, we're adding about 2,500 square feet. So the question is how are we not increasing the need for parking? And I think we are, both, both per zoning and per operationally. But we don't anticipate it'll rise to the level of needing the full 47, which is why we requested eight to be held in reserve. So in actuality, we, we do need the parking. We want to make sure we have more than enough to accommodate and meet zoning. But the nature of the addition does not mean we're gonna have whatever the percentage more per square footage of people because we're reallocating, allocating the space.
So I, I, I want to say something. I, I, I want this to happen. This member of the board wants this to happen and I'm speaking for this member of the board. I, I, I want this to happen. I think it's a good thing. I think it's, you know, I want to see small businesses in Grafton succeed. I want to do what we can to do it, right? And what I'm doing right now is just trying to make sure that if we're gonna give you a variance, that we've got the findings to support it. And, and I take that very seriously. In my 20-plus years on this board, I always have taken that extremely seriously. Right? And I've had variances blow up on me and I don't want that happening ever again. So what I'm trying to do right now is get to some findings that are supportable. And Councilor, you know, I can do the best job in the world. None of them will hold up on appeal, right? But we're gonna do the best we can. That's what I'm trying to get to right now. So when I'm asking these questions that may seem, you know, antagonistic, it's not. I'm trying to get to very good findings. That's what, that's what I'm.
We fully understand and appreciate that.
So I guess the, the one I'm struggling with is what, what's unique to this lot? For this district? There's other lots that have the same elevation issues?
It's the elevation and the double frontage?
Yeah, I, I think to, to that point, yes. We, we, in the rear of High Street is pretty much the crest of High Street. So it is, I, I would say the most significant drop from High Street to North Main Street. So it makes it very unique in that nature. Although it might not be part of the findings, the existing conditions are also quite unique. That there's already a worse condition in, in place. Honestly, we're trying to make this a safer and a better lot. And the fact that, back to your question, I, I don't believe we can meet the parking per the bylaw without this variance because we just, we can't get any further into the hill. The further we get back, the closer we get to another street on the rear because it's a through lot. I don't think there's, you know, there's might be three or four in a row here that have this through lot condition, but we have by far the most steep back to front. And I would say being a through lot in general is, is rather unique as well, just having essentially two front yards, even though you'd never consider High Street a front yard being in the rear.
But it is, I mean, I.
It is.
By the way, the bylaws, yeah, I'm, I meant visually.
You have two fronts and two sides, no rear.
Sure, yeah. Visually looking at it, you wouldn't picture it because it's not.
Right.
At grade and, and that's part of obviously the hardship is that it's not a grade. And the, the further we push back, the closer we get to infringing on the back, so.
So, Mr. Chairman? To, 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 to your comment about the uniqueness, I, I, I'm comfortable with, you know, you're finding that, look, there's two frontages in, in the Edward Business, that's 40 feet, right? Isn't that the number 40 feet yet?
Yep.
So it's two frontages and then the steep topography. Would it stand up on appeal? No, but. But I'm comfortable with it. I think we've done worse.
Yes, I have a question. How many handicap spaces did you have previously when you were there?
I think we only had one.
Yeah, so I, I think that the, the fact that they're increasing the handicap space parking by 100% also is a factor that, you know, I have in my mind that I think is very accommodating. The Accessibility Commission in, in Grafton is very, very active. And they are constantly looking at ways to better accommodate those with limited mobility in any way. And I think that, that's, that's a factor in my mind and I agree with Mr. McCusker. And if I may just ask a question, and it's, and, and, you know, I am also in favor of this project. So my, my question that I'm going to ask now is just a suggestion. Are, are you intending to trash the excellent ramps that you've provided for handicapped accessibility? And if you are, I would suggest that you maybe get in touch with the Handicapped Accessibility Commission because they may have a need for, if, if that, and that's totally, you know, totally divorced from this hearing. But I just looked at that and I looked closely at those ramps.
They're, they're nice.
And they're, I mean, they're, it, it's almost like you could have a tricycle races on those ramps, you know? It's, so I would just ask that, you know, in your planning to get in touch with the chair.
I can find out for you.
Yeah, I forget his name now. But the chair of the, the Accessibility, Accessibility Commission, and they're very active. And I, I'm sure if, if that's your desire to, you know, throw them out, but.
I already, I asked my general contractor what we could do with them because they're so, they're new and they're, I don't like throwing anything away. I'm a recycler and so I like your idea.
Well, I think they could be put to good use and I'm sure the town, to my thinking, could find a place to store them until they could be put to good use. And I know that the town is also involved in building that park and providing like services for the park on North Street. And that has various grade changes. They may be able to utilize some of them in that park. And it could be so noted to you that you provided those. So I would strongly suggest and ask that you get in touch with them and, rather than see them in a contractor's dumpster.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Need this? Yeah.
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McCusker.
I, I think with respect to the special permit, the only thing that that is needed for is the building, correct? And maybe that question is more to, to Bob. I just want to clarify that.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so.
And that's just because of the extension of.
Right, correct. So it's a structure built in 1920 and requires 40-foot front yard setback and that's 21.8 is, the proposal is 21.8. And that's, that's on the front.
Correct. That's the existing setback to North Main Street, Route 140. The 40-foot setback that we would most likely be encroaching in would be the one for High Street in the rear, which this is our 40-foot setback line. We're not even close to that. We're 70 feet from, 78 feet from the High Street.
I thought the orange line was the buildable envelope.
This, so this is where it gets interesting because the, there's a setback for zoning for the building. Then there's the interpretation of the front yard, which is where we cannot put parking. Front yard is interpreted from the front property line to the fascia of the building, not the 40 feet. And I don't know if.
Does Mr. Berger agree with that?
I believe so. I think that was from the, the initial.
I do.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a front yard setback, it's a front yard.
So that's where this orange envelope is the front yard. So it's actually, it's a little interesting because the more you build the building back, the more room you have to build towards High Street.
That doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I mean, especially in the back. So what we're saying is that the front yard in the back is what, 80 feet?
Correct, from High Street.
Yep.
So that's 80 feet.
Really? I've not heard that one before.
It's unique just because, you know, there's two frontages on, in this case, so.
Yeah, but even, even on the front, I just, I, I thought we've always treated the front yard as the 40-foot setback.
Yeah.
Even in the ca, even in these cases where you've got the previous non-conforming. Wow, okay.
Yeah, if a structure is pre-existing, non-conforming, where it's encroaching in a side yard setback, it meets the front yard, then that's a case where you'll meet the 40 feet. I know it's kind, it's, it's a unique situation.
Yeah, so, so actually, all, if, if, if the front yard off of High Street is just 40 feet, then all of those spaces in the back are, 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 don't require variance. The only spaces that require variance are a handful in the front. Where's the 40-foot line on, on North Main Street? It runs through the middle of our parking lot, right?
It's, yeah, it's this.
No, it's not.
No.
This is the front yard is.
Based on the building.
And then the 40-foot setback is basically this.
There, okay, all right. So all of those spots along North Main Street would require the variance. The ones on the back would not necessarily require the variance. Wow.
Yeah, the 11 spots right here. Follow my mouse on the screen, please. Because here's the front yard.
Oh, yeah, it's easy to see there.
It's right there.
Wow, I have not heard that one before. I don't.
Oh, yeah.
All right, but I just got derailed from the special permit. So basically though, it's 21.8 feet off the, off the front line. This, this wording is, right, it's off the front line. All right, so that, that makes it a, it's just those three findings that make it a, a previous non-conforming. So then the current use is, what do we call in this use that matches up to something in the bylaw?
Professional services?
It's not a home. Neighborhood consists of a mixture of businesses.
And residential.
Business and residential, which of course is what the neighborhood district is supposed to be. Those are the uses. I'm gonna just say no change to the current use as proposed, maybe just an extension of it. So I think those three things, it's, you know, not more detrimental to the neighborhood. Is this in the WSPOD?
Yep.
Yes.
And have those numbers been calculated somewhere?
Yes, it's up in the very top corner. Hold on, I'll pull them up for you. So currently it's 2,200 square feet or 4.6%. And then it's going up to 4,153 square feet or 8.7%. And then it's going up to forty one fifty three square feet or eight point seven percent. Hold on, I'll pull it up so you can see it.
Yeah, thank you. Because I can't read this.
Yeah, I know. That's why I'm, I'm actually in the planning set because for some, theirs are clearer than ours.
Not building coverage.
Oh, impervious, sorry. Seventy five percent, twenty point, twenty point six percent currently. And they're proposing with the addition is going to go up to thirty nine point seven percent.
What's fifty percent of twenty point six? Ten point three.
Ten point three.
So they're, that's almost a hundred percent increase. Right? And, and what, what's it, what's the bylaw require? Within the fifty percent increase allowed. So then we have to get into, we, we actually can't, my understanding of that section of bylaws, we can go more than fifty percent, but there has to be provisions in place to deal with that. Is this, this isn't going to Concomit anyway, is it?
That wasn't the intent, no.
So is, is there anything done for stormwater? Did the planning board request stormwater in any way?
Yeah, we had a peer review by Graves Engineering for that.
I'm not sure what we should be doing at this point.
Mr., Mr. Chair, may I, may I speak?
Please.
This is interesting because we were dealing with one lot. And I really have not studied this. But with the addition of the second lot, that probably needs to be addressed in this chart. Because when they're increasing it, they're also increasing the size of the lot. Because the lot was only where the spa was, but then the owner bought the parking lot and added that square footage in. I don't know how we're going to deal with that. That's something for the, for council to think about and the engineer. But I understand what you're saying, Bill. You can only go fifty percent if you're in the water protection overlay district. But they bought more land, so that's throwing the numbers off.
But wait, isn't of forty seven thousand square feet, isn't that the combination of both?
But that fifty percent is, 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 was based on just the first number. If I'm not, if I'm not, I, I don't know. I haven't studied this chart. But you have to make sure that you can go fifty percent of, of what was there when this was enacted. But now you just added more square footage. So did they take in consideration of that fifty percent when they added more land?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Yeoman.
I'd also like to point out that they, the owner has added that extra parking lot when she was operating the business there before the fire. And that the present plan also is a plan that deals with stormwater and stormwater runoff, which is a very positive thing in this particular area. And they're also going to have minimal, you know, curb cuts. Right now, it's, it's a wide open curb cut. And that in and of itself is going to be sufficient to adequately direct some of the stormwater. So I, I think it's a, it's a situation that needs to be looked at further. But I think that positive things that were, that I'm seeing from this redevelopment of this property are very favorable to the landscape area or the hardscape along Route 140 in that area. So, you know, I, I, I agree with the points that have been brought up by Mr. Berger and, and, and Bill. But, you know, I think that the town's going to greatly benefit from the redevelopment of this lot relative to stormwater runoff, forgetting anything else. And I, I recently learned that, you know, Westboro is implementing a stormwater fee. And many towns are going to have to deal with that. And I think that this property is dealing with that issue very, very nicely, so.
But if, if there's a plan and that's been reviewed by Graves, I don't think, I think it's more of a, not, not a, an issue with the impact of this being done. I think it's what are the limitations of the bylaw? And what can we do with that? Because the issue is you're, you're just paving a lot that is now gravel, right? That, that's really the, what's causing such a large increase.
Right, and I, I do think, Mr. Chair, that as the bylaw reads and as was, was mentioned, only if the applicant can provide all necessary safeguards, so that extension, alteration, or change will not be more detrimental to supply and quality of groundwater than the existing use. And Rob can certainly talk a little bit more about the actual management. But we are implementing additional landscaping as well as trees, as well as stormwater management. So, so I do believe that providing that full stormwater report as well as having it reviewed by Graves kind of speaks to that standard of making sure that it's not more detrimental than what exists today. And I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
Do you want me to just very quickly and briefly kind of go over that stormwater design?
Yeah, you could.
Sure. So right now, existing, there's no stormwater controls in place. So as part of our design, which I don't think that the two hundred fifty page stormwater report went into the ZBA submission, but that has a lot of the documentation on the design. But essentially, we're adding deep sump hooded catch basins within the site to add some pretreatment. And we're also including, this is an underground infiltration system. And there's a, it's kind of hard to see with this blue marker, but there's actually a hatched area. That's something called an isolator row that is part of these coltech chambers that you can add, which adds additional treatment, pretreatment before it gets infiltrated to meet, you know, forty four percent PSS pretreatment requirement. With that as well, something that we did just to be very conservative with our design was, we had to basically for our pre-development runoff coming off the site, we had to be below that when we did our post-construction design. We did not include the gravel area as our, in pre-development modeling because that would add additional water coming off of the site for pre-development. And since it's gravel, I don't know if there, I mean, there's no stormwater controls. We figured it would be more beneficial to the town to make our pre-development number smaller. So then that way, when we have to design something, we're going to have an even smaller post-development number. So that's why our system here is actually a little bit larger to basically help infiltrate more stormwater. We just wanted to take a more conservative approach when we did the stormwater design. And Graves seemed to agree with, with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McCusker.
Yeah, so I, I misspoke. Alright, so I don't know how I got that in my head, but three, four, three, five is pretty clear. Extension, alteration, or change may only be allowed by the zoning of a border fields up to fifty percent above what was existing on the site. You know, and, and then it goes honestly, only if the applicant provide all necessary safeguards and ensure extension, you know, is not more detrimental to supply. So, so, I mean, we're stock. I mean, what they're proposing is a hundred percent, or thereabouts. And we can only, we can only allow them to go up to fifty percent. So I, I think we have a problem. And, and what's really frustrating here is if, if, if we didn't add the lot, if we didn't add the lot, now what we're talking about, I mean, because, because the existing parking lot is all paved. So I'll bet any money that green box is not a fifty percent increase. There's no way it is. I mean, it's, it's doubling the size of the building, but when you look at all the impervious, there's no way. So just adding the building is not a problem. If we don't have the lot, the problem is adding that lot. Are they owned by the same person? I mean, literally, the legal entity. So they're merged. Uh, that's too bad.
Well, no, part of the reason she had to do that was because of the parking. Because if they were considered sep, separate, she'd have to meet setbacks and she'd lose six park, six to eight parking spots right here. Because we went through this.
Well, she, I mean, she's getting a variance anyway, so she could have variance for that.
Right, so she would have lost.
No, she'd get, she'd have to get a variance for it, which is what we're, we're trying desperately to give her. Council, do you agree that they're in the same legal entity so that they have merged? Or do you not know?
Based upon what I reviewed, I believe originally they were not, but I think.
Originally they were not. I was told to, I had to do this.
Yeah.
And just looking, yeah, I guess just looking at it, it seems like that's doubling it.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
You know, I, I'm, I'm not going to design because I, I don't do that, but I know that they make impervious parking lots.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
But while I have everybody's attention, under seven, five E, seventy five percent of this lot has to be rented impervious. And if they're, if it's not rented impervious, they have to submit to the building inspector and I have to consult with conservation and the town engineer to make sure that they're following best practices. They are following best practices, but when they apply for their building permit, they need to submit a request from me to make the determination, are they? And then I can submit it to the other boards and committees. I just wanted to, you know, put that out there now. At building permit time, I'll need that taken care of. Seven, five, E.
I'd love to get Jeff Walsh's input on this and.
I, I don't think that Jeff Walsh can argue the point on seven, five, eight. And, and Bill is correct on the fifty percent under three, four, three, five. But of course, there's always a way around it with a, a special parking lot that needs to be vacuumed every, every year, or whatever the general maintenance is on it. I don't think that's going to be a big breaker here.
Can we grant the variance from three, four, three, five?
I can't answer that question. I'll say yes.
I'll agree.
Me too. I mean, I can pull up Jeff's letter that he submitted to plan.
But I think as, as Bob was saying, it, it really doesn't matter. I mean, that, you know, the,
Yeah.
That's up to fifty percent becomes a real hard stop. And that's, that's, we're, we're authorized.
But I, I'm just wondering if there's something we're, we're missing that would be a different avenue to look at this.
I'd, I'd love to know. You know, I, I, if, if the lot were bigger and, and, and they weren't, and they were, you're going just up to fifty percent with the, the coltechs or whatever they're in there, it sounds like they're doing all the right things. Right? I mean, it sounds like, I, I almost, I'm, I'm kind of frustrated that the, it's written this way. Bob, I thought there was a way that we could go beyond that fifty percent. Am I imagining that? And, and this may be what Brian's saying as well, is there's no other way you're aware of that we can get beyond the fifty percent.
No, not the water protection overlay district. It's written in three, four, three, five.
Yeah, that's what I've been reading. It's pretty clear. It's up to fifty percent.
It, but like I said, I don't know how much it costs for an impervious parking lot, but I know that they're out there.
Oh, sure, yeah.
What are, are the reserved spaces paved or are those?
No, but they're included in the impervious calculation for if it were to be built out. We thought that would be kind of disingenuous if we said, oh, it's future, so we're not going to include that in the impervious calculation. Like the stormwater design was designed to include these as well.
Think it has to be.
Yeah. One thing that I can double check, I don't have the answer tonight, but as I said, with our pre-development calculations, we didn't include the gravel as impervious because it helps make the design more conservative and a little bit more belt and suspenders on it. I can double check to see if that might be a route that we can take because, and I can also look to at the regulations a little bit more with this overlay to see if there's a way to kind of get, you know, we, maybe we can draft something up to make the board feel a little bit more comfortable with the design, if that.
Well, I, I don't, I don't think it's an issue with the design. And I don't think we have any concerns about the, the waste or the stormwater management.
Yep.
I think it's the limitation of the bylaw that we can't go beyond that.
Correct.
And that's, you know, we just need to see if there's some alternative.
Question. If you made the future parking spaces, if you designated those to have an impervi, a, a pervious surface. And I know from past experience, we've, we've discussed in some of the projects that have come before us that they had to have roads that would support a fire truck with a grid in them that was a pervious grid, but yet would be structured in such a way that it would support a, a fire truck responding to a fire. So I, I wonder the square footage of those future lots, which you've mentioned that you've used in your calculations, that if you would, what, what would that do to the percentage? If you just said, okay, those future lots that you may never use can only be used if they have a pervious structure. And if, you know, perhaps we can make that a condition to allowing this to go forward. Because to my mind, that is a, a partial solution. The other thing is that they're, they're affecting stormwater in a very positive way. Whereas if it had gone on as it was, and unfortunately you had the fire, but if had it gone on as it was, that we wouldn't even be talking about, you know, stormwater management and curb cuts and, and, and pretreatment. And, and I, I look at that as a very significant factor because the pretreatment of this parking lot, it flows into the Quinsigaman River, which flows into Lake Quinsigaman. So it's a, it's a very positive effect. So, you know, all in all, I think, I, I, I wonder if, if we should just make a condition that those extra spaces be designated as a condition that they could only be used if they were able to support parking spaces in, and with a, with a pervious surface, yet to be determined, you know. I mean, because, you know, we've had.
And so that can be done, and I don't know that that gets you.
No, you're just, just looking at it, it's not going to get, it's not, it's not enough.
Mr. Chair, I mean, couldn't we just make the, the spaces that we would need to make it fifty percent instead of a hundred percent, just make those pervious? I mean, is that kind of simple?
Yep, yeah.
Make the perv, impervious to match the number that we can allow and the other make it pervious.
Yep.
Take that, take that, that space for the future spaces.
And plus more.
And then add, you know, keep checking off. I think your suggestion is checking off until you get enough to say, okay, we're not over the fifty percent.
Correct.
Obviously, I think the emotion of the board, I know this member, I think it's a great change. But, you know, Mr. McCusker and, you know, brings up a point that, that's the, that's the stop that we have to look at, you know, and we have to work with. But I, I think that that would be a solution. Dealing with those and, you know, almost saying that you're, you're never going to park there. And then how many more do you need, you know, to, to reach that fifty percent?
Sure.
To bring it down to that fifty percent? So. So, you know, I like, I like the fact that you have two handicap spaces. Uh, and by the way, the, the chair of the uh accessibility. Commission is Robert, uh, Paul, Paul Nelly, Post, Paul Sinelli. And um, you know, and you can contact him through Katrina. But, you know, I think that there's a lot of positives that have unfortunately for you. The fire was not positive, but. I think that for the town, I think that this, the way you're dealing with this. Is a very positive effect for the town.
Mister Chair.
Mister McCusker.
Yeah, yeah. It's not gonna help here, but the, the more I read and think about this section, i- it's really poorly written. It's, it's nonsense. Um, if somebody had a very small building that happened to be within a setback. That would make it a pre-existing non-conform. Let's say you had a five hundred square foot building. You couldn't make that five hundred square foot building into a thousand square foot building. The way this, the way this is written. Hmm. That's ridiculous. That really is ridiculous. This is, this, this needs to be addressed somehow, um, the way this is written. Um, but of course, that doesn't help, help you. You know, I, to, I, I agree with what Mister Yomas was saying. I, you know, the, everything about this is good. Um, but I don't, you know, we, we, we don't have the authority to allow you to go beyond the fifty percent. I don't, I, I don't see how we can do it. If, if we do it, we're just completely disregarding the bylaw. Now are we just gonna be cowboys doing whatever that we want? And, and I, this member's not gonna vote in favor of doing that. Um. And I don't think the gravel that's there now would be considered per, uh, impervious. I, I think that's a real stretch, right?
Yeah, I know when you model it usually for like HydroCAD is what we use. A lot of times because it's compacted, we will call it. It has like a little bit different of a, what's called a curve number. I'm getting nerdy right now. Yeah.
If, if it, if it had the same number as pavement.
Yeah.
Then that would be simple, but I'm sure it doesn't.
We can certainly check that, cause I know some municipalities do include it within their standards that gravel is.
This is Dave Feist from CMG.
Well, my name's David Feist with CMG. I'm a licensed professional engineer in Massachusetts and stamped the plans. Um, just to answer your question, interesting with. The curve number for gravel is in HydroCAD ninety-six. The perv num- curve number for pavement is ninety-eight. And this is a question, you know, Jeff Graves would probably, Jeff Walsh at Graves.
I make, I make the same.
Would, would probably agree with me, but they're considered for our design purposes are. Impervious, both gravel, compacted gravel parking areas is the same as a paved parking lot. Um, in this particular case, it looks like I, I know Jim Bernardino is the original engineer that did the calc, so I'm not. It's familiar with the, where the percentage of impervious, if they just did not include the gravel, would be something we could look at. But just, just for your information, that's, that is a very slight dif- difference. And as an engineer, they're treated the same. And again.
So that, that ninety-six versus ninety-eight, I mean, is that a, is that a linear scale? Is it logarithmic?
It's actually like percentage. It's basically like ninety-eight, like a hundred percent. Um, would be like a hundred percent. So pavement itself is considered ninety-eight percent.
Oh, really?
And gravel would be ninety-six percent impervious.
Interesting.
But I thought it'd be a greater difference.
Yeah.
And that's something I know Jeff could, you could confirm with him and we can look at it as well.
I wonder what the definition of impervious is.
Good question.
Concrete?
Yeah, well, you. And when you're modeling, what is one hundred?
Uh, there isn't. It's ninety-eight. It's again, it's sort of a maybe a factor of safety, but part of engineer, nothing's a hundred percent.
I think that's really interesting, what the definition of impervious is, cause boy, that sure sounds very similar. What's grass?
Uh, grass can be anywhere from thirty-five to forty-five depending on the underlying soils, if it's an A, B, C, or D type soil.
Wow. Compacted sure feels impervious to me.
Yeah. So, so that's something we can at least evaluate if the board wishes, so. Great, thank you.
Right, so, so if, sorry, so that existing lot then, that existing parking lot is considered to be impervious. Now the extensions were well under fifty percent. We gotta be, cause the only thing you're, the only extension is. The um, the green. Or what, maybe a few spots over there somewhere?
Yeah, a matter of fact, uh. It, well, I don't know if we'd be shrinking, cause we're extending, you know, the, this area is gonna be an expansion. There's a slight expansion here. And then. I believe the pavement basically comes across half of this uh proposed addition. But there is also that ramp that eats up a large section of this area as well, so. We would be under the fifty percent if we included the, the gravel as impervious. I feel, but we can kind of calculate that more to get a more definitive answer.
I, this member would have no problem with a finding that says something like the existing crushed gravel. Parking lot is modeled by the engineers at ninety-six percent. Impervious and we're gonna consider that to be impervious. I, I would be happy. I would, I would be comfortable.
I, I, I agree. I think that that's, you know. Considering. That separate lot. You know, everybody thinks that's, that's a hard packed, you know. Cr- you know, not trappings almost. I mean, it becomes concrete.
Yeah.
And, you know, considering that, that is an existing thing. And I'm in agreement that you're not increasing the impervious surface over fifty percent. The, that, that factor and the factor is that. If the future spaces were to be used. They could only be used with a pervious surface that would support parking on. That particular segment. I think those two factors that Bill points out. And, and you know, I would be totally comfortable with that as well as a condition.
I'm not as. Convinced that that. Solves the problem. I'm not saying it doesn't. I'm just saying, I, what I would, I think, like to see is just a. Review from Jeff of that. Pervious versus impervious issue. And you guys can discuss it with him and. You know, I am almost positive he'll come up with a way to make it work. You know, and it may just be, you know, e- exactly what has already been mentioned as. You know, tweaks to the calculation, so.
Sure.
Um. I think I'd like to see that. For, you know, we.
Mister Chair.
Take a vote on this.
Could we? Could we make that a condition? In passing this tonight, cause it seems to be the only roadblock in the whole. You know, episode. Could we make that a, a condition that the facts as we've stated? With the consideration of the impervious gravel-packed driveway existing. That. Of being ninety, ninety whatever percent impervious. That just asks grave for confirmation of these. Discussion of this discussion that we're having. Because I, you know, I, I'd like to see it go forward tonight with that condition. And I, I agree with you that we want him to concur. He's our. The eyes and ears for our engineering in town. And to let that be a condition that he has to approve. The thought that we have with this condition.
Mister Chair. I, I, I would be comfortable voting for that tonight.
And I, I have the same sentiment that. There's, it's gonna require some redesign or, uh, maybe it's as simple as. You know, changing the calculations and doing that, but I assume there's gonna be some redesign and. Adjustments needed and I think it'd be premature to just assume that. All of those things are, are going to be resolved after the fact. Um. You know, so I. I, I would. Prefer to um. Have a vote on this after we've received.
Mister Chair. I, 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 I'm not, I, I'm hopeful that there actually wouldn't be any redesign. I, I, what I would like to s- have Jeff do is. Review, quite frankly, review the tape. So he sees what we're discussing and where, where, where we're getting hung up. Um, and then basically, you know, report back to us and confirm that, you know, yeah, for. Practical purposes, crushed gravel that's there is impervious. You know, it's, it's nearly as impervious as. Um, as, as asphalt, you know, the, the pavement is. Um. There's no definition I know of here for what impervious is, so I, I think, I don't think we're out on a. A limb too far at all if we just make a finding that says that, but I would, I'd like Jeff to. Concur with it, right? Not that I don't trust this gentleman here, or, you know, I just think I, I would like Jeff to, to review it and come back with those same things and. I would not be comfortable doing anything tonight, you know, base, I, I, it would be a really difficult condition though. And, and, and if Jeff comes back and says, no, not quite, um, now we're, what do we do? We, we open a new hearing? I mean, let's, hey, let's just get it. Um, one question I do have, I mean, i- is, is there an account? I, I assume that there should have been an account open with some monies for Jeff's review for the planning board.
I can check with them.
I mean, somebody's gotta pay for Jeff. Um. So I, I don't know what we need to do to make that happen. It'd be great if we can just kinda piggyback off whatever they, they may have. Yeah.
I can email Fiona.
But I, that's my.
And hopefully it won't be a ton if he's already reviewed.
I mean, he has reviewed it. There is a review. I could see what it says in here. Yeah, oh, no, I know. That's what I'm saying. If, if, if he's already taken a look at it and just.
Well, he has.
Yeah.
He ha- would have to to get through planning.
Bob has his hand up.
Oh, Mister Burger.
Uh, the only question I have, might be a silly question, is when you went to planning board, were you planning on paving that parking lot?
Yes, we were.
Okay. So then this conversation um might be void if they're paving the parking lot.
Why?
Why?
Well, if they're paving the parking lot and seventy-five percent of the lot has to stay pervious. I don't know how that's gonna happen if they don't redesign the parking lot. They're paving over the gravel.
Right, but if it's already impervious, then it doesn't increase it more than fifty percent.
The fire happened. And this parking lot was just being developed.
No, it was there. It was there with the gravel before the fire.
Can you, can you bring up this again? I, I just wanna see the numbers.
Yeah.
Impervious coverage. So they're proposing impervious coverage of thirty-nine percent, Bob. In, in. Thirty-nine percent, um. It doesn't say how many actual square foot that is, but thirty-nine percent of, of what the total is forty-seven.
Forty-seven.
What was that section again? About seven, seven, five?
I'm going to it now. Seven.
Not more than twenty-five percent or five thousand, whichever is greater. So twenty-five percent of forty-seven thousand is. You know, what, twelve thousand? They call it twelve thousand? Not more than twenty-five percent or five, so it's twelve, so not more than twelve thousand. Of any lot area shall be rendered impervious. And they're at. Thirty-nine percent, so thirty-nine percent. Oh, okay. So they're at thirty-nine percent. So that's, alright, so seven, five, E is a whole nother problem.
So.
You know, you're right, um, Mister Chair and, and Bill, if we could just get rid of. Three point five and stick with seven point E, you can flip those numbers. Um, if you show best engineering practices. With the town engineer and conservation. These two sections are contradicting themselves.
So, so there's not gonna. Assuming this issue gets resolved for three, five, whatever it is.
Three, four, three, five.
The applicant isn't going to have to do anything further. For seven, five, E, right?
No, they have to submit to me and I submit back to conservation and engineering and they're gonna show their. Um, separators and how they're gonna recharge the aquifer using best engineering practices, which they've already done. This is just an exercise they have to do.
And if they do that, they can go up to seventy-five percent, which is fine, cause they're only uh going to thirty-nine percent.
That's right. So this can get satisfied.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Alright.
But, but, but boy, I, that seven, five, E is the way that they, you know. Three, four, three, five should be written as well. We, we should be able to go beyond the fifty percent. With best practice or something like that. I mean, that's.
That's right.
Yeah. Okay.
So. Um, so there's. I guess a couple of options at this point. Um, you could request a continuance to a future date. Um, or we could. Put it to a vote this evening. Um, I think we've been pretty clear on what our. Preference would be. Um, but uh, you know, that's a, that's your call. We, we'd respectfully request a continuance this time.
Okay.
To the next available hearing, please. So. I, do we have anything else, Katrina?
Not at the moment. Nothing's coming.
So. We could basically schedule this for as soon as you think you can be ready.
Well.
Which I guess sort of depends on Jeff.
Yeah, I think.
But I.
There'll probably be a little bit of confirmation our, on our end and then just coordination with Jeff. I don't think that this is a, a huge, uh, you know. Hurdle to take care of, but.
So what? Would you like? How far out would you like a date?
You meet once a month, correct? Oh, okay.
It's on, pressure's on you.
Um.
Two weeks, I mean, two weeks would put us at the ninth. I don't know. Well, we have to see what my boards, um. Or the sixteenth. So what is all of your availability? I think the second might be a, a little quick.
Yeah.
That's next Thursday. I think that's quick.
I think just to give us plenty, cause we don't wanna have you schedule a hearing and then we have to request a continuance again in case. So I think maybe a nice conservative number would be three weeks out. Yeah, if that works. Does that work for every?
Yeah. It's okay with me. Alex, are you okay with that? Okay.
So what are we actually looking at? The sixteenth? Is that what?
May sixteenth, yeah.
Yeah, should be fun.
Alright. Do we still vote on it?
Yes.
Uh.
Um, actually.
No.
No, we don't. We discovered that.
Yes, we do.
Well, we, we always have, but there was one time we forgot and Dan said, we legally, you don't have to, but we always have. As long as it's stated in the minutes in the open meeting that we are continuing to May sixteenth at seven PM in conference room A, we're good. But it's your call.
Let's vote on it anyways.
I move that we continue case number. Nine, zero, two, to, what was the day? I move that we continue case number 902 to, what was the date?
May 16th.
May 16th at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Roll call vote, Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Mr. Mahia?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes, so we're continuing this to May 16th. And, yeah, any of that material that you can provide to us-
Absolutely.
At a time would be fantastic.
So you can get it over to me. Unfortunately, I'm out till next Wednesday, so you can either email it or drop it off, and I will process it all on Wednesday when I come in.
Sure. Yeah, we'll get working with, you know, Jeff Walsh ASAP, so.
I'll just send him an email.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And then I'll figure out whether it comes out of the money you've put into planning or, we'll get it covered.
Okay.
So I'll send him an email tonight before I leave.
It's always about the money.
All right, perfect.
Thank you very much, members.
Yeah, thank you very much, everyone.
I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, next item on the agenda is Elmer Rock.
You guys just need to sign those, so-
Actually, let's skip the Elmer Rock and go to High Point.
High Point. Is anyone in the meeting?
No.
I'm still here, I'm just listening. Katrina, you can stop this here.
I'm doing it right now, Dan.
Yeah, okay, so, a quick update on High Point. The, as, as we all know, there was, you know, a denial for the completion, the ZBA denied the completion request, that went to hack, mitigation resulted in a settlement. The settlement included some work on the, either the common shared land or the two lots that Mr. Hingerani still owns, or Adams River Trust still owns. That work was designed and approved by our conservation consultant, Sean Reardon, and then that work was actually constructed over the last few weeks, month, whatever. And I went out there with Sean Reardon, Tim Barlow was there, and myself.
Who's Tim Barlow?
Oh, Tim Barlow's the contractor, the, you know, the contractor who built all the houses, built that development. And we just went over those changes. Most everything was constructed as designed. However, there was one area where there was, basically, I think the design should have been at most a three to one slope, something like that, and it's much steeper than it should be. And Sean pointed that out and said, hey, it's gotta be fixed, and Tim acknowledged it, and they'll, they'll be doing a little bit more work to, to basically make those slopes less steep. And then also just general cleanup, removing all of the various erosion control, silt fences, things like that. There was still some junk on a couple of the lots, I pointed out that, you know, really should get cleared out of there, so. So that's that. I went out, we did the inspection, a lot of what he did looks good. I think, I think they did a good job, I think it looks good, just one area needs a little bit more attention, and they're gonna do that. So I will have to go out there again with them and do one more inspection, I guess. So, that's it. So I just wanted to make sure we got the speed up.
Thank you for taking care of that.
Yeah.
It's finally gonna wrap up.
Yeah.
Maybe, wow. Well, at least now I know how to do everything with, everything we did with Elmer Rock, so now both Fiona and I kind of got our feet wet on that, so we kind of know what we have to do.
Yeah, we still need, I don't think we've actually executed the settlement agreement.
I don't think so, I can check with them.
That still needs to be dealt with, you know, the, the lots need to be transferred to the town or the Affordable Housing Trust, you know, a few things like that, but, but we're getting there, and one of the first steps was getting this mitigation taken care of, so.
All right. The only thing left is minutes?
Mm-hmm.
And we just have to sign the milars, right?
Yeah, we can sign the milars once you guys adjourn. They just have to get signed, and then I gotta leave for Fiona, she's gonna process them for me while I'm gone.
That note, ZBA, have a good night. Thank you.
Good night, Bob.
Well, see you next week.
Okay.
Alex.
Bit easier now that it's the second time around. I know. Don't get, I'm getting older, don't get like me, guys.
We all are.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't talk about getting older.
Everyone except Mr. Yeomans, he's not getting.
Yeah, he's the same age as he was 10 years ago.
Boy, I'm not finding anything on these minutes.
I don't see anything.
Yay!
Yay! Looks good.
I like that.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of Thursday, February 22nd, the hybrid meeting as presented.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, Ms. Reed?
Uh, yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Mr. Mahia?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes, and it's accepted. And I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Mr. Mahia? Yes.
Chairman votes yes, we are adjourned.